I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to welcome everybody tonight. I know where the mayor's at. His father's in the hospital. He's with him and I think you can tell where the other two others called up.
Mr. Blakenham's out of town and Jim's with family.
Okay, so we're running on the both side tonight. Could we have the roll call 5:00 PM?
Here. Here. King. Here. Challenger, here. Blakenham. Spattle. Willard.
Here.
Lazo.
Okay, you have a copy of the March 5th, 2013 meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to this? If not, it will stand as all presented. Okay, and under the reading of communications, I have two. The Fairfield Road tan club is requesting permission to have our annual classic custom and antique car show on Saturday, July 14th, 2013. This event is one of our best promotions to help support the Fairfield Road tan scholarship fund, which is provided to students incoming to high school and Crestview High School each year. As in the past, we utilize South Main Street all day of the show, with the understanding the show does not actually begin until noon and ends at 4 o'clock PM. We do not play any music or utilize any sound system until churches dismiss at noon. The street department normally places barricades in the alleys which we use to control traffic the day of the show. Will those be provided this year? We have a DJ playing music and making announcements all afternoon. Will you provide a contact with the city that can assist hooking up the system for our DJ? We will provide cortijons for the day. Can he be located in the alley next to AAA as in the past? Thank you for your assistance. Sincerely, Rick Hermsen. And we will work on, have that on the agenda later. And the other letter is City of Columbia Mayor David Spattle. This letter is to serve as notice that I will not be serving another term on the Civil Service Commission when my current term expires May 15th, 2013. Katie, if you could take note of that, there's going to be an opening on the Civil Service Commission. And fellas and ladies, how long do you think we should have that until we?
Who was the chairman of the election?
Gary Neville.
Gary Neville.
Sorry.
And that's up May?
He's, his term expires May 15th. So do you think we could accept until a week Thursday and then you can get them in the ballot? I don't know that date. This is the second. That would be the 11th, though?
Yes.
Accept applications until the 11th? Okay, and reports of commissions and boards, you have the border zoning appeals meeting minutes of March 14th, 2013. Are there any questions on those or comments? If not, will we go to each person's desire to appear before council? The first is John Brown from the Columbia Softball Association requesting permission to order tag day on April 20th. Hello, John. How are you doing? Welcome.
Yes. Tonight I'm here representing the Columbia Softball Association. We're asking for permission to order annual tag day. Mr. King was our president from last year and he's no longer with us and he kind of always handled that. So the day would be April 20th, 2013 and we have permission from six local businesses. Those being Post Office, Marathon, Circle K, McDonald's, Sparkle, and H Hardware. And we are incredibly grateful that they let us do this every year and it's a good fundraising activity for us. The girls are, they pitch up for money coming in and out of businesses and they have, you know, they put their time in. There'll be about four to six per business and it'll range from like 9:00 till 4:00 in the afternoon. Some businesses being shorter than the others. Thank you for your consideration, support, Columbia Softball Association.
Any questions for John? We thank you for stepping up to the plate.
Thank you.
That's my intent. Next are a list of, Ms. Erin Jim, would you have to discuss Tomcast Day for the President and Senator? Good evening, Kerry.
Thank you.
For those of you who don't know, this is our park superintendent and secretary.
I've been asked tonight to come and talk to you guys about Tomcast. Came to the city to make us an offer about a community service day. It would be April 27th, which is a Saturday, from 9:00 to noon. And they will come with their volunteers and employees and their families to the park. And the park would reap the benefits of, they'll have $200 worth of equipment. We can ask for as far as shovels, rakes, whatever we would need. They'll clean out the beds, clean out sticks. I asked them if they could scrape or paint the vehicle. They said they could. The benefit, another one is we'll get anywhere between $17 and $20 per volunteer we can bring to the table that day. So we're going to meet at pavilion number four at 9:00 AM. There's a pre-registration date by April 12th. If you call the Chamber of Commerce, you can pre-register there. They'll buy, any of the tools they buy for that day, they will leave for us, so it's a win-win for us. Any money that's raised will go to the R R and B and they are going to use it for a community project finished up at Main Street for the plantings for those bump outs and stuff like that. So all the money goes back into the town and the community. So we're just asking for as many people that can come and help out, volunteers that day. And it's all going to benefit the park and the community.
There's no action later on unless anybody questions over that.
Can we get a backhoe and a nice, nice backhoe?
You know, I asked about weed eaters, so it's $200.
We don't need any action.
No, we're just going to have him announce it so we can get some volunteers.
Get the volunteers out.
If anybody wants to show, anybody that wants to show is welcome to. Families, brandy food, breakfast. There's going to be breakfast.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Okay, and next, we have a couple of people representing a community group in regards to the upcoming Columbia School Bond. Like Richard Hura and Danny Clancy. Welcome.
Welcome, welcome. Thank you, King, and thank you for the welcome. We're here tonight as parents of children in the school district. And we are here to gain your support, but at a minimum, give you some information. We think it's vital that you, as the city council, have the facts about the bond issue that's in front of our community. In the past, there was some misinformation. Some of that, the last levy, the bond issue that the ballot was led by a website that had the council on it. And I know that you're not necessarily responsible for that website, but there was inaccurate information on that website. And so Katie felt it was very important that you have the correct information. I personally believe that a great community is built upon great churches, great city government, and great schools. And the three working together make a great community. And obviously, you here are the city government team. And so with that, we have asked our superintendent to come and our treasurer to come. We were going to have Mr. Muck present to you the needed repairs and the possible repairs if that would be fine with you. If not, Danny and I are prepared to do that, whichever you would prefer.
Whichever you prefer.
Okay.
By the way, you are accurate. That website is in no connection to the town.
Thanks for all of your talk here tonight. Believe me, I know how these meetings go and I'm not going to try and take over a lot of your time. We know how important it is. Would you believe that city council and the school are cooperative? At the very least, in terms of, we all have common goal and that's to provide a certain aspect to our community. As a school district, we want to provide the best possible education for our kids and for our teachers and for our parents. We really think a strong school district really represents well Columbia. Been in the county now in education for over 20 years and I've always felt very highly regarded for Columbia schools and what they bring to the table. When I came to the district four years ago, we had some buildings that were margin of death. And I happened to be in a facility that was redone by the state with about 85% of state funding. Columbia would only qualify for about 25% based on its pretty reduced land population. So we're considered in this county a bit wealthy. The unfortunate part is that dollar amount would be to take down schools and build new. At any rate, we did a project with Joshua Dixon Elementary. We did that with refinancing of the current high school. And we were able to fully renovate that facility and add some much-needed space to it. The South Side Municipal has found itself in deterioration over many, many years. The building was built in 1962, the addition in 1969. Since then, some renovations have been done to the roof area and to the multi-purpose room in 2000. And some lighting and additional renovation had taken place. The unfortunate part, and I'll share with you so you have a little bit of background knowledge of what we're experiencing in, because I don't know if any of you have been in the district, as likely we welcome you there. We'd love for you to come and tour the facility myself or Mr. Buzzard. We'd love to take you around and show you what the facility currently looks like and what kind of state that it is in. Probably our first and foremost issue is with the roofing. The 69 addition is and still need a repair of the roof. But you're going to see a lot of things that are happening. I'll be happy to pass this around to you. The bubbling and whatnot, and it has reached, it is reaching its end of its life expectancy. And it's a pretty costly project, the roof by itself. It is a flat roof. We did put a pitched roof on Joshua Dixon, a metal pitched roof. We believe that that pitched roof will take us 40 to 50 years. And we really think that that's going to enhance the building for quite some time. If you have an opportunity to go through Joshua Dixon, I'd be happy to also take you through that facility and show you what we've done. It's phenomenal now and it really is mostly the old building. And I just want to share a couple of items that we are having some issues with, with water due to the roof that has caused some deterioration. You can't go into anywhere in the building that you're not going to see ceiling tile either damaged, sagging. We're just not there because we can't keep up with replacing those. Every time we replace them, they saturate with water, they fall apart, and we end up getting what you see here. And it's this time of the year we're really getting that because the ice has thawed on the roof. The winter has done its toll on us and every time we go up and fix a location, we end up causing almost as much damage as what we do to fix it. Obviously, it's not just the roof. I think we've experienced some damage inside that we really need to renovate. I'll pass this around to you. Some of the other that you'll see is, again, these are very simple pictures. There's much, much more to be seen. Tile damage, where tile has lifted away and we've had to replace. We had very similar tile in Joshua Dixon. And we were able to effectively put new tile over top of the existing tile. This tile here is asbestos tile, which, meaning if we had to remove it, we would probably be looking at an abatement as well as redoing floors. So I'm going to cut this around. The unfortunate part, I think, of our, of our last bond issue was that, one, the timeliness of it. I suggested to our Board of Education that we go for an August, fill August bond issue, which was not met well, I think, by our community. Solely my recommendation to our, to our board. Our board went with that recommendation. We felt very good about what we had done with Joshua Dixon Elementary School. We felt like we saved a great deal of taxpayer money by reinvesting dollars from the high school into that facility. Therefore, extending life of that facility way beyond probably 90 years. So we felt like we had a lot of community support. And we really felt like we had a lot of people focusing attention. We had great coverage by the papers in what we were doing at Joshua Dixon. We went with a non-traditional campaign primarily because we didn't have somebody step forward to become treasurer. Therefore, not being able to secure any funds to create and buy signs made it very, very difficult for us to operate. So we had to go by phone calls, by the internet, by word of mouth, by meetings. And it was not received very well. So unfortunately, and I've taken the blame in our board meeting, I'll take the blame in front of you folks here as to how that went out. I have a great group here supporting us. Danny Clancy has stepped forward to become our treasurer. You should see signs in a very traditional manner in our campaign. We're not trying to slide anything by anybody. The facility is in need of redoing. I don't think it needs to be knocked down. The unfortunate part is we're looking at about $4 million over 29 years. It's about $18.83 per 50,000 of your house property value. You can do the math on that. I'd be happy to get out to city council through our bond committee. Literature, information that goes beyond what I'm telling you tonight. I think it's important that you have some factual things from, from the school and as well as the bond committee. In order to redo the high school or knock it down, you're looking at probably upwards of $12 million approximately for a new facility. We think we can renovate this one for about $4 million. The Ohio School facilities have evaluated our building. They will knock it down. And we will have to go on a bond issue, pass that with the public, much more than the 1.23 mils that we're looking at over a 29-year period. So that in a sense is, is a very small condensed version of a lot of the things that we've been talking about. But I would love for any one of you or all of you to come to the building, walk through it. Look at our handicap accessibility. We do not have an elevator on a two-floor, actually three, four building. Two in the 69 addition that meets the main floor in the middle, which creates three floors. And that would take another significant amount of money to adequately redo. Certainly, if we do a renovation project, that would have to be addressed. Any questions? I'm sure I'm leaving out a few things. I apologize. Our treasurer is here tonight as well. I can tell you that in my four years here, Lori, Lori has been, Lori Posy has done a wealth of information. She's been in the district for over 18 years. And she can give you a great historic background of the rotating door of administrators that have been through the district. I hope to be here a little longer. If I keep putting bond issues up, I may not be. But at any rate, I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you for letting Mr. Muck speak. I'm going to pass this around. This is the way that you calculate what your tax increase would be for valuation of a home, which was one of the biggest pieces of misinformation that went around last time, is how much exactly it's going to cost. And this will give you the exact formula that's used.
Okay, one for the line term.
I have a question. You say $18,000 per $50,000 home.
Yes.
Is that real estate value or tax value? Because the tax value is 35% of the real estate value.
That's your property valuation.
It would be the real estate.
Or the auditor's office.
So you're saying that would be the 35% of the, of the, so you're talking about $18 for $150,000?
No, no. On a $50,000 home, 35%, that would be tax and that's the $18.
35% of?
Of $50,000.
Of $50,000.
Is the $18.
So you're talking about $50,000 real estate value?
Correct, yes.
Not $50,000 tax value?
Correct.
Correct. So you're talking about, really, not very many homes in this town that are $50,000.
Right, so if you double that, you get $100,000 home.
So you're talking about $36 for $100,000?
Correct, yes.
Because I didn't think that was very clearly explained until now.
For example, so if it's a $50,000 home, it would be $18.83. A $100,000 home, $37.67.
Thank you.
A $150,000 home, $56.50. A $200,000 home, $75.34. A $250,000 home, $94.17. And for a $300,000 home, $113.20.
You're getting above our pay grade.
Thank you.
Pardon? You're getting above our pay grade.
My house is in, you know, lower end.
Are there any other questions?
There were two hands up back there. They didn't move enough. One of the things that I wanted to mention that's so important to me is the trust that you all have, that people have in you because you're elected officials. People selected you to have this position and, and so they trust you and they trust your word. And we're just asking you that when you hear people talking in town, that you would give them this correct information, the information that we have provided and, and share it with them in a very open and honest and frank manner. And you've seen the need there. I've never imagined my daughter or son walking through a hallway with a trash can collecting water in it. I just, that's not the type of school. And with regards to that too, it's not the type of community that we are as Columbia. We're trying to build this community and continue to still thrive and be successful. You know, you redesigned the streets here with the beautiful sidewalks and the lampposts to attract people to the community. And that's what we want our school building to be like too, attractive. And our schools are excellent. There are people in the audience here that represent not only the administration, but we have the school board. And we have teachers here and spouses of teachers. Lots of people support us. And Danny's going to tell you about what we're doing as a campaign committee. It's got wonderful pieces in what we're doing here today, so.
Real briefly and then we'll get going. I know we've taken up a lot of your time here tonight. As a committee, Rich Hura and I are co-chairs for the Columbia Building Excellence Committee. We have collected over $3,000 in donations just from parents, staff members, people that want to see this pass. We have purchased 200 lawn signs that will be put up next week on the 8th all around town. We have 170 property owners who have asked us to put a sign in their yard, which is a great indicator of the support that we have in the area. We are planning informational meetings all around town. We're renting the clubhouse at Firestone Farms. We're going to speak to Southern Terrace and Arrowhead and different areas. And we will have a meeting at the library as well to get the information, the correct information out there so that people can make an informed decision. We're not here to tell you vote for it, you know, just blindly. We're here to tell you, we have the information. We want to be transparent, which I think is one of the biggest issues at the last IT bond issue was that no one felt like they were getting the correct information. So Rich and I and Mr. Muck and Lori, we all want to be completely transparent and let you know exactly what it means for us and our community. And realistically, if this does not pass and our school goes south, then our property values go south with it. So even if you don't have students in the school or going to the school, be living in Columbia and it is going to affect you. Thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate listening.
Thank you for coming.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of comments if I could.
Sure.
I remember when Mr. Superintendent came in and Joshua Dixon was in such bad shape. I remember the photos, the water laying between the buildings and, so I'm glad to hear that the renovation was successful. I would imagine that was part of the influence that made you feel the direction you're going to go with this school now versus tearing it down. Is that correct? I mean, you were happy with that, that direction? Absolutely. So, you know, I, I think that the community should probably, in my opinion, support this. We're certainly not going to get any better. One thing that, I don't know if you need a copy of this or not, but it sells a little bit better if it's 15 cents a day. I mean, I'd probably lose that much out of my pocket. That's $4.71 a month and that's $56.50 a year. I, I think if there's any doubt, come and visit, huh? Absolutely. Okay. You're welcome, not only the city council, but any community member. Well, and, and keep in mind that Joshua Dixon is a, a good example of what, because I remember you wanted to tear down and start over at one point. That was one of the proposals. Previous superintendent. Okay, I'm sorry. That's okay. And you're both good-looking guys. But I think that if there's any doubt, take a look at the facilities and take a look at the results of the Joshua Dixon school. And I think that'll answer a lot of questions for anyone.
I also, one comment. I think there was the impression this board did not support the schools because of that website. And I want you to know that we have no connection to that website. What's said on it or the opinions thereof. So it wasn't this board that wasn't supporting it. It was an individual that was doing that, so.
And we do realize that and that's one of the reasons that we wanted to come and speak to you today because a lot of people don't realize that because they see city council on that website and they don't ask any more questions. So maybe this, you know, being in the paper with Katie here will get that information out also that it was not the general consensus of council.
Okay. I don't know in the past that we've ever formally passed anything that we support or anything that I support. And I can tell the Tom does and each of us, we can help, so I'd be glad to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Also on the list to talk tonight was Kelly Harding, talking about heroes and heroes. But I see the engines fault seem more important here. But I see the engines called seem more important to her.
Yeah, she did have to leave. I can give you just the basics of what she wanted to address tonight. Her Heroes and Halos organization had a safety day last year. It's an organization for special needs children. And that event is going to be held again this year on Saturday, June twenty-second. And it's going to be held at the school this year, not in the park this year, so I don't know if council necessarily needs to approve it, but she wanted to make council aware that the event is being held at the school this year on Saturday, June twenty-second. And I'm sure she'll attend the next meeting if she can, or maybe even if she's back here tonight.
I think it was successful last year.
It was a big success. I think there were about five hundred people there last year, so looking forward to having you again this year.
Okay, anybody else in the audience that would like to speak tonight? If you would give your name before you speak.
Okay, Nurse Basin.
Okay.
I live on one four four seventh from the Mission Road. But a lot of time my wife works, so I spend my time over her house. My aunt Martha here called the town, she had the road, Worcester Street worked on. There's a lot of potholes on that street. And she called the, she called the town, they didn't come and do it yet. It's getting pretty bad.
Okay.
That's Worcester Street, Colombian.
Okay, I think blacktop isn't available yet, but you have been cold patching it up.
I'll put it on the list, I'll check it out.
He'll put it on the list.
Okay, I use that road pretty much too. I, I use that road every day, because I do, I do the morning drill, and I come there to get some of my trash. It gets pretty bad.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Anyone else? A former mayor, I see moving around, nothing to say tonight?
Mom.
Mom, okay. Let's move on to the managers' report.
First item on there, we have Tyler Thaxton, that the chief and I would like a motion to concur. Concur with our motion. A motion to concur with our decision to hire him. Chief, you have anything else?
Just briefly, Mr. Thaxton has served with our auxiliary police. As you know, we like to bring people along, try them out, and get them accustomed to our, our system. He passed a rigorous and extensive background investigation. He lives here in town. He has gone in some of his own time to us already. And unfortunately for Kevin Floss, I poached him off the auxiliary, and we're gonna try to press him into service on our part-time rank. As you know, we've lost a number of part-time officers to full-time jobs in other locations. One of the State Patrol, one of the City of Warren. That's the downfall of a part-time force, is that they often, the good ones often get other offers and move on. So we have to kind of keep that, that force up, to keep our overtime down, and keep our street staff as cost-effectively as completely as we can in today's world. And that's why we're here with the request to hire Tyler. He's a pretty good guy, we've worked with him in the past, we have great hopes for him, and if you approve, he'll go into field training fairly quickly here. He has some availability to offer us, which is a rarity in our part-time staff. Usually we only have one or two days here and there. He has more availability, or what's the value of him? And he's starting to grow a tail, and some years looking more like a pony, and planning to ride in home. So we're gonna put in the work and plant the fruit.
Could we have a motion to that effect from the mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion to hire Tyler.
Second. Any discussion on Tyler? Other than he has a beautiful shirt and tie.
I think he has to make a speech.
I think he has. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Deanne?
Ferguson?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Schlenker?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Is maybe premature or is it too quick to, uh, sort of? Let's have you come up and...
Face your new employer, Tyler.
We work for these people.
That's right. You solemnly swear that you uphold, uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and the laws and ordinances of the City of Colombia, and faithfully discharge your duties as a part-time police officer for the City of Colombia. If so, say I do.
I do. Tyler, you normally give you about ten minutes to do one.
I'm ready to work. I'm, I'm helping people, so I'm ready to get out on the streets and serve. So I'm ready to learn. I learned, I moved from Ashtria Villa, I live in Jefferson, and I come to the same community. And I've seen so far that people are, are close together, and through the schools especially. I've seen a lot of people just growing together, so I like it here, so I'm ready.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put it to your wife.
All right. I'm impressed, because I think that's the first one that we ever said that it speaks to. You impressed me. Go ahead, Mr. Administrator.
Continued working on the water plant to-do list to get that going. We're gonna have a meeting with USDA next Wednesday.
How close are we, Dan?
We're getting, we're really, really close. We're down to, yeah, down to just a couple more items, and hopefully after that meeting, we can get that done.
Are they being helpful?
Absolutely.
Okay.
USDA has been wonderful.
Okay.
And they've agreed to meet with us to review our to-do list and make sure that we're completing that as asked. Held a managers' meeting with all the department heads, was very successful. To note, for the street department, we've already secured the grinder for the last week in May, so we're gonna grind all the streets in May, and then we'll be paving at the end of June. The bids for the blacktop, we're gonna open those on Monday the eighth. And I've got update on the pictures for the park office, it's coming right along. Mike says that the animator is supposed to be done by... Including ring on.
Okay, anything else?
Next thing is the bill list is, was in your package.
Okay, you do have a copy of the bill list as of March two thirteen. Anybody have any comments or questions? If not, the bill list will stand. I see we have copies on the income tax report up till now.
That's as of the end of March, last Friday.
Yeah, we'd like to comment on that, it looks good.
Well, it's, it's up a little bit at this point.
That's good.
We're a little over two percent better than last year, and we had a good la, good year last year. So hopefully it'll keep coming, we'll get the rush here in another couple weeks. April fifteenth is right around the corner. Everybody who hasn't filed yet, that's a couple weeks. But yeah, hopefully it'll keep, it'll continue.
That, the two percent amounts to ten thousand three hundred, is that right?
Yeah, that's the difference, yeah.
We collected ten thousand three hundred more this year than last year up to this point.
For the same period.
Yeah. That's a good thing. Okay, nothing else, Mr. Mayor?
No, that's it.
Okay. We have the old business, so we'll go into new business. We have some revolution, there's a little revolution to it. We might have a revolution if we act like we do in cypher state money. Due to the length of these ordinances, could I motion to read them like Tyler's?
Second.
Discussion? Deanne?
McBain?
Yes.
Schlenker?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Okay, and first under new business, a motion to set a public hearing for zone change from R three to C three at six thirty North Main Street on May seventh, two thousand thirteen. Do you want to comment on what they do, Dan?
It's right down there, the white, down there near Seventh Street, between Seventh Street and McDonald's entrance there.
Is that for the Mr. Snyder's?
Uh, yes. White brick house.
It was the long bottom house?
Yes.
And that's a recommendation from the planning commission.
Yeah. So I need a motion to set a public hearing for the one eighty-seven.
I'll make a motion that we, that we approve setting a public hearing for this six thirty North Main Street zoning from R three to C three.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Two seconds, everybody's good. Deanne?
Schlenker?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Okay, now I need a motion to offer us a letter to Scott Davis and Brinkler and Eckler, attorneys at law, regarding and legal opinion regarding performance and payment bond language. This would be for the award, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion on this. Any discussion? Deanne?
Callender?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Schlenker?
Yes.
Next, we have a mo, need a motion to approve a request from Rick Dursen of the Fred River Tand Club for permission to hold the annual classic custom and antique car show on Sunday, July fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, on South Main Street in the City of Colombia. Music will not be starting until noon. And prior to the event, they must provide a certificate of insurability, naming the City of Colombia as an additional insurer. Do you have a motion on this?
Move.
Second.
Discussion on this?
In his letter, he had a number of questions to do, asking the city.
And those questions were? Will the street department place staircases in the alleys? Will those be provided this year? They will be, okay. Can they be located in the alley? The porta-johns can be located in the alley next to Turcoe, as in the past. Is that okay with everybody too?
Dursen?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Deanne?
Ferguson?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Schlenker?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Okay, we need a motion to approve a request from John Routh for the Colombian Soft, softball association to hold a tag day in the City of Colombia on April twentieth, two thousand thirteen. Do you have a motion on this? Okay. Mr. Don, is there a second? Do you have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Deanne?
McBain?
Yes.
Schlenker?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Okay, we move on, resolution number thirteen dash R dash four forty-eight, first reading. A resolution accepting monies from the Colombian County Board of Commissioners to be used exclusively for wages and related benefits to permit the City of Colombia Police Department to assign an officer to the Colombian County Drug Task Force. Do you have a motion on this?
So move. Second.
Chief, any, anything to report tonight?
Nothing beyond the information I've previously given you, a copy of which should have been in your package.
I think that was pretty complete, but maybe you can tell the people what we're doing.
I, I think that what my reservations had been are addressed in a number of things I like to think of as metrics. We need to see results from anything we participate in, or it doesn't take long for people to pay the bills, which translates to you, the taxpayer, to question why we're doing what we're doing. In this event, there are ten specific things I view as metrics to measure the success or lack of progress, as the case may be, from our participation. Those things include how many cases are opened in our city, how many, how many ounces of drugs are taken off of our streets, how many arrests are made, what's the conviction rate, things like that. How many things are we seizing and forfeiting in terms of assets which are gained from illegal sale of drugs? Those types of things are metrics, things that are hard facts that can be looked at and measured over time to tell us whether or not our decision was a good one to have someone participate. Secondly, we've been able to work through our part-time program with the scheduling we have to provide an officer twenty hours per week to the drug task force for their use on our behalf, without creating a problem or a deficit in our schedule or a lack in coverage. In other words, it's not gonna really cost us anything in terms of coverage to have someone go there twenty hours a week, the way I have it scheduled, the way they've agreed to use the person, and the way that the officers agree to work, which is an agreement between us, it's a slight modification in his flexibility, just to be respected and appreciated. Basically, beyond that, it is encouraging to see that they're moving in the direction that fosters accountability. Once the investigation is complete, that you've read about in the paper, we should have a, a much clearer picture on the direction that it will take beyond that. I have every confidence that Ohio BCI, who's leading the investigation, will do an excellent job. They're the gold standard when it comes to investigation into public corruption. So if there's anything there, they'll find it. If there's not anything there, then everything will be clear. Either way, it's a good thing for the community and for the citizens of our county. At this point, I don't have any discomfort with the officers who are assigned to the task force. I think our participation can be a benefit to the city, and we'll find out what we measure against the metrics. I think it's a, a very low-risk proposition for us to try it on a temporary basis, that's per resolution. And thanks to Dan, though, we refine that to include the interest of the city of our people. Any questions?
I do want to give some credit to the county commissioners for hitting the ball rolling. They have approved the police department's ten thousand dollars for a year for part-time and twenty thousand if you put on the full time. And the chief has accepted the part-time ten thousand dollars. So is there any other comments on that? Deanne?
Schlenker?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirteen dash U R dash two seven two one, first reading. An ordinance is adopted for sodium chloride requirements or purchase for an effective period of twelve months from the date of the award inclusive, or on an effective date as determined by the director of the timing of the bid. Do you have a motion on this?
Move.
Second.
Discussion on this? Lance, any comments?
Just to work on, we've asked for the same amount of salt as we did last year.
This is the state corporate business?
Yes, for the, for the road salt. We, we, yeah, we had, we have a ton of, I haven't totally checked it last time, I think we had a hundred, about a hundred tons of that. What's it take to do an average? I think it's, I think it's, I think it's thirty-five tons, I'm not sure.
So we need three more ounces.
Yeah.
Then we can start with new salt.
I know he's happy with what we had and what we were able to order with the six hundred tons.
Okay. Anyone else? Deanne?
Callender?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is an executive session for two reasons, a discussion of personnel, and a discussion of purchase or sale of property. And Dan, could you give her the numbers?
Sale is cheap too, and personnel will be for compensation. Yeah, we need to define it in some general term.
Appointment, uh...
Yeah, appointment.
Job release, that kind of thing.
Yeah, there you go. And I would recommend doing, sale of property first as we could. We have Mr. Blenner here.
Can you add these costs as well? Uh, could I have a motion to have an executive session?
Sure.
Chief, any discussion? Deanne?
One second, I'm writing down the numbers, please.
Oh, okay.
Did Mr. Ferguson make the motion? And Mr. McBane, do you need a second?
We'll have to do this the other way around.
Okay. Ferguson?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Dan or Lance, whether there be any action on these items after the executive session?
I'll find out.
No action. Okay, if you don't stick around, which you're welcome to do, thank everybody for coming to know these issues in school. It's great to see people here. Nobody needs to worry, and that's a good one. You're welcome to stick around, we're not right for it.